Seven o'clock. I'm Paul Solomon, Chairman of the Board. I'd call you a member of the October meeting of the Board Supervisors to order. We always begin by placing our flags, since we have some very astute-looking Boyd Scotts here tonight. One or another to come up to the microphone and lead us in the place to flag, please. You're not all the same age, are you? Okay, well, I'm all right. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And line him up here. Can you explain to us what happened, why you're here? Tell us why you're here. Show up for the podium.
We're here for our citizenship and the nation, or citizenship and the community merit badge, and we're gonna listen to you guys present your ideas, and we're gonna listen to them and write some notes down and then present it to our leaders back at the troop.
Thank you.
What's your name, sir?
Troop 48, Dallas.
Is this the only local government meeting that you are all gonna be attending? And of course, of what you're doing, are you gonna go to other, like, town or council meetings?
Uh, we've been only just talked about Town 1.
This one? It becomes the right place. You weren't allowed a longer time. Both what to do and what to stop.
What are your names, fellas?
I'm Jordan Williams.
I'm Beth Davidson. I'm Alice Stone. Welcome, guys.
Welcome, and thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you for having us.
And once you get back, you start writing this, this large, long paper, our manager calls in to the serious. If you have any questions, serious thought questions, you can call there.
Okay.
Thank you.
And we'll try not to snore or make any other funny noises.
He's just thinking for himself. Introduce ourselves, and Board members. Bill, what's your, what is your?
I'm Bill Cox.
Ian Weisler.
Mark Ralbich.
I'd like to introduce Wendy Brown, our Secretary, Jim Bupp, our Solicitor, and Todd Ziegler, our土地 Manager. Welcome, one and all. With the approval of minutes for the October meeting, you can have a copy of your packet. We get a packet every month. Every time on the agenda, you can have some material, background material, so you know.
If I can add, there's one minor correction on page five. It's under new business, but it says the middle misqualification. We had Mr. Reynolds incorrectly identified as should be supervisor of the town. We have Chairman Reynolds.
Well...
Nothing, nothing toward you.
Well, I'm getting nervous. You've all had a chance to look at the minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for our last meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with that last correction.
Is there, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next item. Next item is the Treasurers' Report dated September 2016. You've had a chance to take a look at that. Are there any questions? But first, that's out of town motion to approve the minutes for our last meeting, September meeting. I'm sorry, the Treasurers' Report.
I'll make a motion to approve the Treasurers' Report.
I'll send it. Any, any discussion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Prove? Now, item number five, we have an opening public comment period. We also have a public comment period at the end of our meeting. Also, I want to announce we record these, these meetings, and it's on, it's on our website shortly thereafter, so you can see the whole meeting on the website. And when you come up to speak, we appreciate if you give us your full name and address. Anybody care that that's the board this time? Let's move on. Orders and Resolutions. We don't have anything this month, I believe, do we? Okay. You wanna?
You want the Dollar General?
Yes, that's next. On the subdivision and land development, Shrewsbury Dollar, Dollar General Land Development Plan. This is located on, I'll see if we have you next, just rest over the YMCA. Todd, you wanna introduce the matter to us, please?
Yeah, you'll see on the wall there in the board, you have your packet. This is just a portion of the land development plan for the proposed Shrewsbury Dollar General. And as the chairman mentions, on the corner of Constitution Avenue and Miller Park Drive, this area right here. What they're doing, they're here before the board tonight to request two waivers. This is not actually, the board's not actually considering the plan tonight, that will be next month. The two waiver requests that they're asking for is a waiver on the course payment requirement and also the required two access drives to the property. Currently, there's one proposed right in this area here. And then the, I'm sorry, the second item then is just informational. When there's a plan submitted to the, to the township or any municipality, you have 90 days to act on it. In most cases, the developer will sign that waiver request, the time waiver, which allows you to go beyond the 90 days. And the Dollar General had done that, in fact, but we did receive notice that they are withdrawing that waiver, time waiver, and they grant the township through November 30th to act on the plan. So this plan will go to the Planning Commission regardless of the outcome of tonight, to Township Planning Commission on October 19th, and then it'll come back to the Board Supervisors for approval or denial at their November 2nd meeting. So going back to the waiver request, which are the two items the board needs to take action on this evening. The first one is the waiver request for the course payment requirement. That request has been reviewed by Township staff as well as the Planning Commission, and both recommend to the Board Supervisors that that particular waiver be granted. The second waiver request is to have only one access drive versus two, as stated in the ordinance. That's been discussed by staff on several occasions and went to Planning Commission in September, and Planning Commission made a motion to recommend that that request be denied. So those are the two items. We do have representatives of the plan here this evening. They would like the opportunity to, to speak.
You're certainly welcome to come up front. So there was a waiver that was denied and a waiver that was granted.
That was represented, yes.
A waiver on the requirements of the subdivision and land development ordinance. Welcome, introduce yourselves and get started. You can make whatever presentation you feel is necessary.
Sure. Introduce myself first. My name is Charlie Surr. I'm the attorney of Stevens and Me in Harrisburg, representing the applicant. With me this evening is Ed Davis from the, the applicant from Miller's, Miller Development Group. And I also have Carol LeFever, representing the ownership, is, is back here also. The Dollar General has agreed to sell, you know, to put the store here, so we don't know yet, or the, um, no others. So, um, we have the plan, it's been pending, been through staff, and as the address said, those were the two, two items that are really good for you. I think the, the modification regarding the furbius is, was nearly as controversial as discussions about putting that in, because we have the underground storage for the stormwater. That was really supporting the need, that we really did need the furbius payment, because we have the recommendations for that. Most discussions clearly have to do with the second access drive that we have on here. So as you can see, we have one access drive off of Miller Park Drive. There are no access drives on Constitution Avenue. The recorded subdivision plan has created these lots, prohibits any other access onto Constitution Drive. So we're unable to put one on, which would really be the logical place, if you were gonna put a second driveway in there to make sense. You'd have one on, on both corners of the lot, but we're unable to do that. So we have one, um, one driveway listed on there. There was a traffic study which was put into review by the Township staff, and I think, I think there's any issues with it, and it shows that the driveway functions fine. There's no issues regarding turning movements, there's no issues regarding keeling or separation distance. The Township engineer did have an issue regarding the location of the driveway. He might get the further back than what it is, but this works for us. It meets the Township ordinances for one driveway, and it's, showed to function perfectly fine as per the traffic impact study, so it's not a real issue. If there would be a second driveway, come in, if, if the modification would be denied, it is physically possible for us to put an in driveway in on the southern part, sort of nearly the yellow lines coming there.
Here's a corner.
Our property line, of course, goes down into here, so it is possible for us to put a second driveway, it would be a in-only, maintain this. This driveway would then shift slightly closer to this intersection, which the Township engineer has an issue with. In fact, he'd like to go further this way. So we don't think it makes a lot of sense to put the second driveway in, in here. This function is completely fine, trucks can fit through here. There is bounceable curb all along here, so in case there's a, a jammer up here, someone could easily not across here. And the building's about 70 feet away from the road anyway, so it's not that far away. There are other buildings within this development which do not have two driveways, I think the magistrate's office and the...
Orthodontist.
Orthodontist. I'm not sure if that two driveway requirement was in place when they came in there.
It was not.
It was not. So they're not subject to it, but we clearly would be given the senior ordinance. So, um, that's what we have here, and again, we think with the modification standards, we're proposing a driveway full access, which meets, otherwise meets all the ordinance requirements, meets the traffic impact study, no safety issues involved at all. And it just doesn't really make a lot of sense for us to do that, it's extra expense for us to do.
This is the only outstanding issue?
Yeah, and, and the reason why we're here, this came up at a staff meeting for the first time. We had been reviewing the plan, and the location of driveway has been a battle discussion. Where do we move it, how do we put it in? And at the last staff meeting in September, we became aware of the ordinance requirement of having two access drives, and then we needed a modification, so that's why we've come forward with just a modification. Otherwise, the plan is clean, yeah, with fines. If the modification is denied, which we hope is not, we'll go back to Planning Commission, and there would be just a slip put in here, and this driveway will get moved slightly farther down, still meeting otherwise the separation distances, et cetera. We just don't think it makes a lot of sense.
Thank you. Great presentation. Any questions on the members of the board? Oh, you got a chance to talk to them. You want, you want to speak?
Attorney, sir, explain everything.
All right. You can jump in anytime. Our engineer was concerned by staff, you know, his cars coming off of Constitution Avenue may get lined up there somehow, and that would impede access into your driveway.
Right, that was the engineer's concern too.
I'm saying, that was the engineer's concern.
Yes, that's right.
And is that, do you have that same concern?
No, no. How many cars did staff report to the...
You said three.
Yeah, well, there's 79 feet, so you could put four cars from the stop bar at the edge of the driveway.
Two or four, all right.
Yeah, three or four cars.
Four, four could fit comfortably. At one point, we had three, but we were able to shift them back a little bit further.
And if I'm correct, the stop bar is at this point, correct?
Yes. Yeah, the...
And this is the paved car.
Yeah. The traffic study recommended 40 feet from the stop bar to the edge of the entrance. We have 79 feet, so we nearly, we added 29 extra feet to the, this, for the traffic study.
Well, I was interested in hearing for the first time that there's a covenant or some sort of de-restriction that you cannot access this lot on Constitution Avenue.
Yeah, it's a note on the plan, on the subdivision plan.
Recorded subdivision plan.
Yeah. So when that, when the subdivision was approved, that is a note on that plan, that no additional access can be put onto Constitution Avenue, the lots in front there.
Is there any dimensional limitation? Just, I just assume that maybe you can't put a road there. Is there any site distance or any other limitation that would prohibit you from putting a driveway into Constitution Avenue?
Other than the covenant? Well, it would depend on permitting issue.
Yeah, I realize that, but is there an issue with that? I mean, is there a site distance problem or something that you would not be in good stead to get it permitted from the state?
Well, I mean, we haven't done that yet. You know, now that after we looked at, you probably could, you probably could get something in there, it might just be a right in, right out, it may not be full access, but you may be able to get some permit from that.
The site distance looks pretty good there.
Yeah, I don't think site distance is an issue.
I don't think so. I, I, it's pretty clear in the subdivision...
Looking west, is it really a site distance problem?
It would probably be only the right in, right out. You wouldn't be able to take a left turn out.
Right. That's probably, it would probably be limited that way.
I'm guessing that when this Miller Park Drive was permitted, Penn lot typically wants to limit the number of access points, so they probably required them to have all the lots internal to development access off Miller Park Drive. Thus, that's probably why Miller's under reported subdivision plan, that no access is to go off of Constitution. That's probably what happened.
Has our staff indicated that a second driveway further to the stop along Miller Road would, would, would work? Would be adequate to solve the issue with stacking?
I mean, it will work, but, you know, just aside there, I, I think they're accurate when they make the point that if we put in a second access drive, it's gonna push the other one closer to Constitution Avenue, so it's...
Yeah, and that's what doesn't make a lot, that doesn't make a lot of sense.
I agree. I'd be that.
May I ask something, Mr. Solomon?
Sure.
Thanks, Mr. Surr. I just wanna make sure I understand what took place at the staff meeting, because I wasn't there. Did you say that the engineer's shoes suggested that the single driveway should be moved further south on Miller Park Drive?
No, that was our suggestion. If, if, well, let me back up. I think his, his point was, the staff meetings had happened, and I wasn't at all involved, but what I understand was, this driveway, assuming there's only one, because the, the initial staff meetings we had, there was never discussion about a second driveway.
Understood.
It didn't come. The idea was that this be moved back here, and that would work if this building is rotated so it faces Miller Park Drive. So right now, the front faces there, it could work. That doesn't work for us, and that was always the bone of contention, was adding to move this back. We, we say, we can add in a slip driveway here, meet the separation distances, it moves this up and still meet the stacking requirements of the traffic impact study. So it was our idea of compliance that, you know, we can do it, it just doesn't make sense.
Did CS Davidson suggest how far to Miller Park Drive they were suggesting the driveway should be moved?
I do not recall in the meetings that there was any specific distance.
He wanted as far as, as far south as we could take it, which just changes the site completely, because we can't get the, the truck into the building. Leaving the building where it is, which is where Dollar General wants the building to be successful, we'd have to front Miller Park Drive, and you couldn't, leaving it there, pushing the driveway up, you can't get a tractor trailer in there to Miller Park.
I just wanted to test the concept of whether we, it has been discussed, as to whether that driveway is as far south on Miller Park Drive.
It's as far south as it can possibly be with the building where it is. I shifted it further south twice at the staff meetings. We started out much closer. Yeah, we started out probably where this aisle is, right in here.
Straight in.
Straight in, still meeting the ordinance. I was able to push it back. At one point, it was like 60-some feet, and then I, I looked down a little bit harder and adjusted some areas of the loading, I was able to pull it back even more. So I'm far back as I can get it now, and still get the tractor trailer in it. They deliver once a week into that store, but we got to be able to get them in back in now.
So is the, uh, furnace you're buying the lot from, the end of the lot to the south of it?
Uh, yes. I think he said that's a yes.
Have you considered buying that and...
Dollar General wants to be fronting the main, by the way.
I know, but you could buy, I'm saying, buy that in addition to what you've already considered, already considered.
Okay, he's gonna sell it. I don't think that's good an option, that they're gonna buy the land, I mean, this works for them.
I mean, it's probably, it's, it probably is a tight... I still wouldn't be able to get the tractor trailer right there, leaving the door.
Access point you have now, there's a lane in and lane out, right? It's a double lane, basically.
It's 28 foot wide.
Lane's going out, you have the right lane's gonna move you on the left.
Standard driveway in and out.
This board, any questions, please, gentlemen?
The opposition to rotate the building is just not having the direct frontage to Constitution.
Direct frontage to be a successful store, I mean, I'm sure otherwise.
Are you, I mean, is it really good? It's a good lot, it's flat, and I don't, the location is ideal. And, uh, but you're convinced that you wouldn't do as good, as much of this if you, if you changed the, the face of the building, rotated it?
Yeah, Dollar General does look successful once not. They improved this, this site plan, and this is what, what they want.
How many does each Dollar General have?
Uh, I think we own, we probably own 50 of them, our company does.
All the driveway.
And it's quite true, they'll need to, they almost always front the highway for visibility and access issues.
We're kind of on the spot here, because our staff, our engineer, our engineers, and what you just said, that it's gonna cost staff an effort to go out of Constitution or some off and further to the south on Miller, Miller Drive Road. So, um, we're quite capable of, no, but, but I'd like to try to find some feasible alternative, you know?
How soon do you need action on this? I mean, what I'm thinking about is, with us having the rest of the story here, I mean, if we need to talk to staff and do this next month, is that gonna set you back?
Yeah, I've, I've been going to staff meetings since May, and it's, I gotta move this far and forward, we're kind of have to be able to build before we're supposed to have to build.
Okay. So the staff and the planning commission, both are really not in favor of this private situation.
And please understand my frustration is, you know, we've spent the effort and money to do the traffic study, and the traffic study has been supported by the Township engineer. He's got enough, no issues with the traffic study. We're, you know, we're pushing even further than the traffic study recommended, and that's why we do the traffic study, to find out what's, what's needed, what operates and what functions safely. And it's clear in the report that it's a safe and functional driveway. And the engineer just has, Jeff has really felt like all along being wants this driveway pushed further back, and I, I just can't, you know, as an engineer, I gotta make sure things are safe as well, and, you know, we're complying excessive in the traffic study, so...
If the traffic study had said there was a problem, we wouldn't be here. You know, we would...
And we've done other sites, very similar, as I say, functional, of, of access.
We are not, not positioned to ignore our, our staff, nor our planning commission. I mean, so we're kind of on the hot seat here. Our first, we're always trying to be accommodating, but, but at this point, I think it's the time for it.
Is there an option for right turn only?
For you?
Right turn only exit?
On Constitution Avenue?
No.
Absolutely not.
Is that, you say there's no option on Constitution Avenue?
No, there's the covenant on the subdivision.
But how, I was gonna ask our solicitor, how binding is a covenant? I noticed, I mean, could it be reversed by mutual consent of all parties?
I'd, forgive me, Mr. Solomon, I don't have the plan in front of me, so I don't know exactly what it says, but, no, it's more of a process than that. It would require resubmission of the plan to cancel that note, that's all.
Okay.
I'm afraid that's not really an option.
It's a, on Constitution, all right.
And again, that's what makes sense.
We're narrowing this down, I'm not sure if it's also gonna be any better, but you have all that parking in front of the building there, why couldn't you, I mean, and, and the, and the building itself is closer to the, to the south of the lot, there's on the, you know, it's pretty close to the, the south line of the lot.
Yeah, it's about as far back as I can push it.
I see that.
You can see with the curve in it, that you've moved it back as, really as far as makes sense.
Yeah, I, you know, the parking, we only need 25 to 30 spaces, but zoning requires, I mean, 62 spaces, so we'll build, they're not gonna be used, but we'll build.
Well, you could get a variance, you could have a competitive headaches, I mean...
I could, I don't know.
Well, I just assumed that, well, how would that ease your problem if you could, if you could?
I still can't access off of Constitution.
I know that, but how, but you could maybe move the building up further.
It's not gonna change the building, I'm as far back and as far over as I can be on the property right now. I can't go anymore east or south, you know?
We didn't create this problem, we're just reacting to it, you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah. And again, the, the site function's fine, the only problem is, we only have one driveway. There's no problems with, with access, there's no problem with circulation, no problems with parking, there's no problems with setbacks, it all works. The only problem is a sense that there should be more stacking distance with no ordinance-based standard to say that's what you need. I mean, if your ordinance said needed that, we've needed, and unfortunately, it doesn't say that. We're significantly more than what the ordinance says and what the traffic impact study says. So I agree, there's sort of a logger jam, but we don't see the basis for the Township engineer's position, except that's what he likes. And if the ordinance said it, that's great, and unfortunately, yes, you guys are in a hard spot, because you have to look at what the ordinance says and agree with modifications. I mean, if you say yes to modification, we'll go through with this. If you say no to the modification, the driveway's gonna move closer, and we're gonna put that up right in, right out. Those are, those are the two options.
The driver's gonna put further south, I understand?
No, it's gonna, the main one.
Gonna put closer to the right.
Right. We will put a, put it in driveway here, this will be made full access, and it's gonna shift slightly up, which for the perceived problem of stacking is gonna make it worse.
That's right.
Those are the two options.
Well, you, we, we have written the names, our engineer and our entire staff, right? Commission member, who's in Miller County, and our fellow enforcement officer, and then that was followed up by the planning commission agreeing with the staff. Now, so we're searching for, try to find a way, but I don't, I don't think it's there. What, what would you do if, if the board voted consistent with our staff and planning commission?
Just like I said, we would put in a second driveway on Miller Park, in one, and the main driveway moved up. It'll be in front of the planning commission in two weeks.
The planning commission, the staff have to put that?
No, it's gonna go to the planning commission. You guys have deadlines to act on it.
We comply with the ordinance.
Yeah, we comply with the ordinance, they're gonna have to vote.
That doesn't resolve the, the engineer's issue.
No, it doesn't.
Makes it worse.
That's right. And our point, I don't want it to be hardball, but...
Be hardball, play it different.
Yeah, but he's been, he's been dancing around since May, which is, that's the problem. And, you know, again, we think this makes the most sense, that's it.
Suppose you're wrong. Suppose there is stacking, why's this give me a... Then what do you do? What, what do we do?
There could be stacking if the driveway moves back 10 feet, 20 feet, 30 feet, you know?
It's less likely to...
Is there consideration? Is there one? Signal?
No, the study looked at left turn, you know, it, it supported the left turn lengths and everything, but the study looked at it as well.
Do you have that study?
Todd, do you have anything to add to our conversation?
No, just, you had mentioned about the traffic study. What he said is accurate, we have a copy of it in the file, and it does meet all of our ordinance requirements.
Orders, Scotts, understand this issue. We're obligated to protect the health, safety, and survival of both of the people in our township. So when somebody comes in with, with a store, we have to make sure that the path is gonna work, that they're parked in places, and all that's considered. And every regulation in our zoning book is because there was a failure in the past, so that's why we have a zoning book. Okay, that aside. Any other comments? Comments and a motion?
Why don't we take each one of them separate?
Yeah, I'll take your way. The one, the one's easier to prepare, perhaps.
I'll make a motion that we approve the forest hay requirement waiver.
I'll second that motion. And discussion. Call the vote, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's see, hard to these, you can do.
I'll make a motion that we deny the access drive limited to one that we require to. I'll make a motion we deny that waiver.
Is there a second?
I have a comment, can we?
No, go ahead and second it first, we can, then, then, then we'll...
Okay, I didn't know if anyone was seconding. I, I'm not seconding. May I make a comment? Please, okay, sorry, Paul.
Well, I'll make a, I'll second this motion, just for the sake of vote and discussion that they follow.
Could we approve it, subject to, uh, a direct letter or discussion with the planning commission and, and, and staff on this, so it's not a thirty-day layaway for these guys?
Yeah. We could put conditions in our vote, uh, can, our, our solicitor, can we, can we approve this or deny it? I say approve it conditionally.
Could, could we stay our approval till we do some research this week?
Well, technically, yes. Keep in mind that a decision like this has to be made at a group meeting. So if you're gonna attach a condition, sort of depends on what the condition is, right? Condition to find a...
Something to happen.
Consensus at a later time, that, that's not really a legitimate condition, in my opinion. Here you are in your meeting, right, and you either decide now, or you postpone it to another meeting.
Another public meeting.
The timeframe allowed the waiver, I'm not sure that you really have that luxury here. The applicant has not extended you, or ready to do any extensions. I'm afraid you've got it probably now.
Would you like a decision tonight, or would you like a decision next week?
I'd like a decision, so I, if you choose, I'm gonna be recentating the plan next week for the planning commission, with two driveway or one driveway. So, I would like a decision tonight.
What do you think we have to say?
We're trying.
Motion to second?
I know, it's hard.
I mean, you? We're motion to second, may try to discussion. If not, I'll call for the vote, Bill.
Uh, I vote aye.
Vote is to deny?
To decline.
Deny the plan, as it is good.
No.
And it's very thoughtful. You want, you want to ask it back to you?
No, I think the proposed alternatives, I don't think will benefit us.
The, the alternative that they have in mind at this point, there could be other alternatives as well, depending on the staff and on the planning commission too. It'd be aye. Well, that's a much solution. Well, I'm gonna, I, I wanna hurry you a bit.
No, you're coming, you're coming.
Anyway, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote in favor of the motion to deny.
I vote in favor of denying as well. We have to vote.
I disagree with what you said.
We're the best guys.
Well, thank you for, for that decision, I appreciate it. Um, you'll be seeing us in the beginning of November then.
Okay, and hopefully we can all come together in a timely way and find a solution that none of us ever thought about.
We'll look at it.
We'll hope, okay.
See if we can do that, appreciate your time.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Under subdivision land development, item B, Rebick and Hebbel, minor minor subdivision plan. You wanna give us a little bit of background on that?
Yeah, we have, um, I believe it was about two months ago or so, the board approved this amended subdivision plan. Several years ago, these two lots were subdivided. The property line between the two lots was the center line of a shared driveway. So the driveway originally landed here to serve both of these parcels. The requirement as part of that approval was that they had to post, the developer had to post an eighteen thousand dollar improvement bond to guarantee that that shared driveway would be constructed when the properties were developed. In the meantime, an adjoining property owner purchased this property here in the front of his parcel, uh, between Hebbel Road and, and his home. His, his intent was not to develop it, but again, it is a separately approved subdivided lot, so at some point down the road it could be sold and, um, developed. So what they did is, they resubmitted, they revised subdivision plan, and this parcel owned by Mr. Rebick now has a separate individual driveway into that parcel, as does Mr. Hebbel. He now has, this is the, the driveway, private drive that serves his home and one other property back the lane farther. And they did approve, uh, as part of the condition for the plan, there's a shared access drive agreement. So that's all been approved. So now that the plan's been approved, all the agreements have been recorded, uh, we're now looking for that bond to be released, because what happened is when the property was sold and it was still a shared drive, Mr. Rebick no longer was posting the full eighteen thousand, he posted nine thousand, Mr. Hebbel posted nine thousand. Because there's no shared driveway, no public improvements, there is no requirement to, to have a public bond for the improvement. So, just the, it, it's a formality, really.
Okay.
There's no reason behind it, so.
You have motions to release the bond?
Seven.
There's seven.
Now, second?
Will be any discussion, I'm just gonna call for the vote.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Tell the scouts briefly, the first development plan was for a store. This is for two homes. And again, to protect the community and the people that are buying these lots and living on these lots, we have to make sure that they are, uh, able to get rid of their sanitary waste, that their shoes waste, have water, have proper setbacks from the road, have, make sure the driveway comes out where they have site distance, that there's no danger. So we have to make sure they meet a whole series of requirements, protect the health, safety, and welfare again of the community.
Okay, let's move on, um... Next two items are...
Susan Fox and Joe Bull, that's just for...
They're, they're informational, as you know, both, uh, the Foxman Board is playing as well as the Joe Bull Sussex Place Plan, both filed land use appeals with the township. The, um, hearing will be heard on the Foxman Board's plan, court of common pleas on October thirty-first, and then the, uh, Joe Bull Sussex Place Appeal, that's just been assigned to a judge, and my understanding is that the, uh, the records by both parties have been submitted to that judge, and I do not anticipate that there will be any hearing, the judge will just make a decision based off of the, the equation.
I'm gonna be, once and all, talk about the scouts. Item number D, you have, you have an agenda? Item number D, under seven, Sussex Place, one of the items of relief that the, the developer wants is we have a, we have a hundred-foot stream buffer on this side of the stream to protect the water quality in that stream, and they wanna make, I think, a thirty-five-foot buffer, so they're challenging the township. But, uh, we're gonna be on your landing and defending our, our stream buffer, all right? Right there, okay. Enough of that. Uh, item number C, uh, no, I'm sorry, item eight, managers' group report, Todd?
Board, you have a copy of my written report, just a highlight, a couple of items. There's two legal matters that we discussed in executive session last month regarding the Glenworth Mobile Home Park, and also one-two-zero-seven-seven Baltimore Street, Mr. Inspector regarding his sewer leak. We're still trying to get some answers from the bank, and also from, from Mr. Inspector, and I did speak to both neighbors, so I wanna get all that information pulled together, and probably we'll request an executive session prior to next month's meeting so we can do that information.
So, anyone in the first second, anyone in the other executive session between the second? Am I understanding that?
No, no, just be the one prior to the, the better second, yeah, it's needed, yeah. And then, any other thing, just to let you know, um, our zoning office of Keith Hunnings and our engineer Jeff Schu will be meeting, I believe, next week, they're going to have their discussion and bring some feedback regarding the one thousand square foot requirement for an engineered stormwater plan. And that's all.
That's your report. So, every month, we have a report from our, our manager, our engineer, our street commander that takes care of our streets, they report back to us and tell us what progress they're making, what problems they're having, and so forth. So that's what all these reports are about, planning commission, same thing. Okay, um, Todd, you wanna move on then with this? We have a manager's report.
Solicitor's minutes.
And I have no report for you this evening.
That's why, that's why, didn't you mention that? Well, by the way, you asked the solicitor, the lawyer for this, this developer, you know how pleasant he was?
Very nice guy.
He smiled. It's just amazing, I, I, I would apply that you are as, as pleasant and agreeable, but we need more lawyers like that. Okay, uh, zoning officer, you, you have his report, any questions about it? If not, uh, engineer's report, I'm sorry. Yeah, the manager's report, you've got that in your packet, that's straightforward. Engineer's report, no more substance there. Any questions about the engineer's report? Okay. You have a copy of the liquid fuel fund, I don't know where that fits with your... Where's that on the agenda?
The authority.
The authority report. And that was a favorable report, I can hear that. Okay, planning commission, any questions about any reports? Okay. Now we have a section where the sewer drivers get a chance to, to speak. And, uh, some of us take advantage of the opportunity, others are more shy, I think. Anybody wanna invest publicly?
I'd just make a, just a comment, um, to recognize, I think Todd and Keith being rather persistent in our many sign violations, where our signs are stuck against the road and other things, and probably people don't realize the effort that goes in to try and to contain that, but we did just last month, I think, collect forty-six hundred dollars in fines that had been, um, directed to several people who were, not only persistent violators of the sign violations, so, John, what about it?
Two, two years ago or so, there was a program to include the cover along with steep bank on the Walmart shopping center, and they did about maybe a third of the site, the lower part, I believe it was. What, what is big concern to you there?
The, the last word I had from the property owner was that this past spring, we were anticipating to put the, the second, third, you know, in the middle section. Um, I, obviously, as you have, that has not happened, so I do not, I can follow up to see what their, their plans are. As you know, they're not obligated to do that, um, under any of our ordinances, but they recognize that they're kind of an eye source for the community and upon the shopping center.
The, the first vegetation, it's, it was a certain kind of plant, I don't know what it was, it was kind of an exotic plant, that didn't really...
I believe they, they were all native plants.
They're all native?
They had superior nursery, do the work.
That doesn't need a native.
Well, they're native.
They were, yeah. How did that first, it, it didn't cover uniformly or completely, did it?
Well, I don't know if you recall, but they, they kind of had pockets of different plantings. The idea was it would provide not just one big blanket of solid green, but the idea was that it would provide some color in this area.
That's good.
But my observations has been, the, the bottom third was certainly greener than the top two thirds, um, but I, I haven't really, to me, the color doesn't pop out when you drive down by there.
Okay, but you, you could...
I'll follow up and ask them what their, what their plans are.
I have a few real good comments. Timing is everything, particularly when you're planting trees or, you know, parking lot islands, you're gonna work until we get that done, is maybe even next week?
Yes.
And then, we talked about the trail's gonna be built, and this is Miller Park, Miller Park. We're gonna put a trail through the woods, and we're gonna have a lot of heart matter there, hopefully. And then, uh, one other thing too, that is, I talked to all the market students about that, is that, maybe it was the manager's project, they, they drove a tractor over some white ground, you're gonna think, yeah?
Yeah, that, that was a...
You never drive on a white ground. Right, scouts, you make rocks, they're back to soil? Okay, moving on. Any, any other comments?
Do you have anything for, um, any of the scout projects, or you have anybody?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, that's it. That's good, thanks, Andrew.
You're welcome.
You're very studious in that, as always. Uh, we are, we are, we're talking to one of our official officers in the township, Stan Walters is here. Any progress on, uh, Stan Walters is involved with emergency management coordination, and he's, with his help, we're trying to get a number of different local governments to work together, providing emergency management as one unified source if there's an emergency. How about the Eagle Scout project?
Stan Walters, twenty-six Essex Circle Drive in Shrewsbury Borough, I'm the emergency management coordinator for the township. Uh, so your question is, again, what?
Okay, I was just giving back, we have a stormwater management basin, it's like a big pond, although using not much water.
Oh, the Eagle Pond, okay.
And, and the one end has a big drop-off where the water runs out, going, going into storms. We're looking for an Eagle Scout to put a bridge across that opening so we can continue the trail around the top of the berm all the way around the pond.
And this is...
It'll be a public trail. This is just off, just southwest of Miller Park. So, it's west of there.
Okay, sorry, um, so as far as the trail project, uh, I've just been notified by Mr. Ziegler, the township manager, that an Eagle candidate has in fact contacted him about potentially doing that project, and so, as that develops, maybe we'll hear more from it.
Okay, and what's going to happen is, he was gonna try to get it in here before winter hit, but to go through these, get the plans together, get his people lined up, hopefully get the supplies donated and so forth. He's also going to have to submit a plan to us to review, and the board's going to have to approve it, and I'm also gonna have our third-party inspection agencies to, um, people walking across it with you, it's, uh, it's just timing-wise, it's not going to happen, but I would think within probably around two months or so, we'll just start seeing some things coming from him, so it's very good.
He's just going to turn eighteen in February or something.
No, he does not.
Okay, all right, so is this located at?
Where is this located at?
You know, we're just talking about Miller Park Road, which is, comes off of the Constitution Avenue by the YMCA, and you go back towards Miller Park, and just where you get to the sign by one of that, on the right, uh, there's this very nice, it's gonna be a, a wildlife area, we're gonna, it's gonna, we're just gonna connect our park, our trail on Miller Park, this'll be more of a secluded area, you know?
Back behind New York, the Dallas, that area, yeah.
The dental office there behind that, but the berm is high up, so you can look down and see the water and the wildlife, and it'll be a circular trail. It'll be, it'll be a good project, we're gonna put bird locks on it.
Does your mouth help? Over there, how many is it?
Yeah, yeah.
It doesn't show, it, it's a stormwater basin that's...
Yeah, it's all that's left, you know?
Gotcha. Is there another project that we have thought about or considered? Is there another project that we have thought about or considered?
I was going to say, if your trouper, you know, many other Eagle Scouts are looking for projects, if you contact me, I know there's some other things that we can do beyond that bridge project.
Okay.
We've got a few boys that are getting closer to that at times.
A little certain project, and we'll work together and get a project.
I'd like to, Todd, you need to suffer from impatience, like some of us do.
Do what?
Suffer from impatience. Think about it, okay? There's no meditation for it. It does seem...
Oh, yeah, there is.
It does seem things up. Anyway, go ahead.
Okay, so you also asked about the combined EMA, the regional EMA.
Yeah.
And so Todd has taken the documents that we received from Eastern York County EMA, their documents that they used to organize, and he's modified, edited those to put blanks in for where we could fill out the information. And he's put in the names of the four municipalities, Shrewsbury Borough, Shrewsbury Township, Glenrock, and Railroad, instead of their municipalities. So he's turned them into a template document. And I created, I don't know if Todd's had a chance to look at it, because I just emailed it to him today, a spreadsheet that we can use to plug numbers in to model a formula for how to pay for it. So we have, I think, everything we need for the meeting that's coming up next Tuesday. So next meeting, Tuesday.
Okay. So Todd, you mean to give a reminder about all this, about that, maybe, if you have any questions?
In addition to that, as you're aware, York County Emergency Services is getting ready to implement a new radio system for our responders, and EMAs are part of that. And so this, the last two weeks, we inventoried all the radios that we have. And I've talked, and Todd has talked to the vendor who's in charge of doing the replacement. So we have talked to them, and they know what our inventory, and they're going to swap radios one for one. So we have a base station, we get a base station for each of our portables. And we did have an option, there was a mobile unit that was with the roads department that really proved not to be too useful, because once it's installed in a vehicle, it has stuck there. So we took the option to convert that to a handheld, that then Mike can, can take with him any truck that he drives in, rather than have it stuck in one truck. We're also watching, obviously, Hurricane Matthew. The track today took it safely away from us, but just as Mother Nature again, you know, bends it one way or the other, so we keep an eye on that. We also have a kind of a pipeline awareness project underway. Each year, the owners of pipelines, gas and liquid pipelines in Pennsylvania, through the 811, number to be called to have line, to have buried cables and things marked. They offer awareness training for all of our fire departments, EMAs, and so I attend that. And they will help us identify major pipelines that run through our municipality. And the fire departments can apply for grant money based on how significant we have pipelines. We do have a natural gas pipeline that runs through a portion of the township, so. Additionally, today I was contacted by Spirit Trust Retirement Home, which is in the township, and they are updating their emergency operations plan. And as the coordinator for the township, I've worked with them on their plan, and I ended up signing off on it. So that process is undergoing, ongoing.
We...
I should do, I should do a report for you to go ahead.
Thank you.
You are very succinct normally. So in a succinct way, could you tell the Scouts what you're trying to do in coordination and everything, and what you do succinctly now?
Emergency management is dictated by Pennsylvania law that every municipality, every borough, every township, every city has to have an emergency management agency and an appointed coordinator. And I, on the recommendation of the supervisors, I'm appointed by the governor to be the coordinator for the township. And I'm responsible, they delegate some responsibility to, they're ultimately responsible as the elected officials, and they delegate to me to develop an emergency operations plan and to see to it that all of our public service agencies, fire departments, police department, all work and coordinate under the national incident management system, that we're ready for any kind of incident that might come up. Anything from a traffic stop by state police for speeding, to a large hurricane, ice storm, whatever may happen.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Stan.
Thanks, Stan.
All right, moving on. What an old business I guess. Exelon Habitat Food Project.
Yeah, I just want to update the board that that work has, the majority of the work has been completed. All the native plants have been planted, I think it was a total of 175 trees and shrubs. This is in the area, down in the wetlands area, between 851 and Cracker Barrel. That, if you recall, was a grant that we received, it was roughly $29,000. There still is a little bit of work to do, and will be into next year. We have what they call... And I'm not throwing at these garlic sticks. Are you familiar with those, Paul?
Not, not totally.
They need to be placed in October, and then in six months they'll be placed as well. And then we have 500 plugs, native plant plugs to plant as well. But the majority of the work has been done. I know Paul's been down to see it, and he's mentioned that it looks good.
The garlic sticks are to reduce deer and rodent damage, I think, on the trees they plant.
Figure of some type of deterrent.
I thought that the group from Land State did a really good job. We had very good trees and shrubs, some were like six feet tall. And this is the headwaters of Deer Creek, and Deer Creek takes a lot of the dues from all the shopping centers. All that water comes off the shopping centers like Walmart and runs right into creek, into stormwater management basin, then into the stream, and cold water fish, the water, 70 degrees or less. All that warm water coming off the parking lot, doesn't help that situation at all. So the more trees we plant, the more, where we also are retrofitting the stormwater management basins that are up in that shopping center. The retrofit needs, we're going to alter them so they hold more water, release it more slowly, basically. All right. You can ask questions too. Our agenda's pretty small tonight, so if you have any questions, just pick up. Moving on, the store leak, this is history.
Again, this is just informational. I just wanted to bring it up for the purpose of record-keeping, since it was discussed the last board meeting. Mr. Taylor, as agreed to by the board, was in that following Friday, and he did pay the amount agreed to by the board, which was $11,027.47, which fall his accounts current for 3137 and 3139, that's clearly drive. The wedding's going to be sending out the quarterly bills in October, and we will resume billing him quarterly from this point forward for his sewer.
Is he pleased with the settlement?
Yeah, I did not see him when he came in to pay. I don't think he actually should be here, so.
Okay, thank you. All right, on to we business. We have a fairly lengthy development agreement. And for those, what's that, similar to development agreement, a agreement that the township and a developer, basically, regarding the development that they're planning, who are located in our township, and what their responsibilities might be.
Sometimes it involves more than one local developer. In this case, it involves New Freedom Borough Township.
Todd, this is not really the desired goal, is it?
Yeah, this agreement is. And I was explaining what it is. Let me break this up here. Done Management purchased the property. This is the Susquehanna Trail here, and this is New Freedom Borough. And if you come in Campbell Road off of the Susquehanna Trail, it's roughly 65-acre parcel here. The developer is looking to construct single-family homes, and he is also looking to provide those homes with public water and public sewer. He approached New Freedom Borough, who has both of those utilities, and he made that request to them, and they're open to that. However, they're located in Shrewsbury Township. This bluish-black line indicates the line between New Freedom Borough and Shrewsbury Township. So we have an agreement that's before the board this evening, which basically outlines the services that he's requesting. And this agreement, if approved by the board, would authorize New Freedom to work directly with the developer, and also, if that all comes to be, also to do the billing for water and sewer directly to that property. It's really, the township's not involved in this, other than we're basically granting permission for New Freedom Borough and the developer to work together in providing these public utilities. It has been reviewed by our solicitor, by Solicitor Buck. He had some comments and spoke with their attorney. I believe those comments have all been addressed. And I don't know if he has more he'd like to add.
No, everything that Todd said is correct. Keep in mind that the large scale development agreement doesn't involve us, it's between the sewer authority and the landowner. The township's role is on page nine, and it's to adopt the rules and regulations and ordinances that might be necessary for that connection. That's the extent of our responsibility here. And quite frankly, I don't know if we may have mandatory connection ordinances in place already, but they may not apply to this area yet.
They would not apply to this area.
So they'll eventually be supporting, needs to be done. Otherwise, it's straightforward.
So where, where is it, Cash, on this?
Without traffic issues or those sort of things that might occur as a result of...
This is, oh, you have no plan yet, correct? Correct. There's been no plan. They're just getting lined up before they go through that entire planning process to make sure they have the utilities and so forth.
We will deal with that. They can't even start planning until they have, know they've got other parts of the For everyone here, this area is called a receiving area, and they only has, they only put four houses on that parcel right now, where there's Indian Cultural Zone. What we're allowing to do is brought to the farmers, the landowners, the right development rights. Each farm has a handful of rights, it could be three or four homes on a farm. Now, they can transfer those rights, instead of putting them on the farm and to form homes, they can transfer them to this site. And so we're trying to get, trying to preserve our farm, and this is one way we're doing that. Okay? All right, I want to take a motion to approve this development agreement. I'll make the motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Bill? About aye?
Aye.
Aye. Next item to leave, this sounds very dramatic. Large-scale burn. That's what it says. What's that mean? Okay. Paul?
Well, by our ordinance, a large-scale burn is 20 square feet or larger. We have a request from Grease United Methodist Church on Plank Road. They are having, I understand, a youth event on October 21st from 6:30 until 9:00, and they requested to have a burn.
That's what's wrong.
And any large scale requires approval by the board.
This is all, there's no treated wood.
I do not know what they're planning to burn. We can certainly follow up on that. When we issue the permit, we would provide them with a copy of our ordinance that would, you know, clearly defines what you can and cannot burn.
I'll make a motion that we approve this request, subject to verification that there's no recital or tossing materials in materials that they're going to burn.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Off the board?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Well, I hope that they take advantage of the opportunity, describe hell to the people that are surrounded, surround by fire. It is too good opportunity to pass up on that. Hey, first story, I think, what's that? I was in the third grade at Holy Day Catholic Grace School in Evansburg, Pennsylvania, and a very vociferous nun, spent 45 minutes telling us about hell, how our flesh burns for eternity, how miserable and terrible it is. Well, I couldn't sleep that night, I walked downstairs, and I was thinking, you know, I said, I don't want to end up there. My parents said, what are you doing up there? Just be in bed, you know? And the Catholic Church has three conditions for a mortal sin. And I was up there saying, well, now, is that a mortal sin? And everybody, but anyway, I survived, and anyway, with that aside, moving on. Park improvements. This is, we're going to authorize some, to pay us some bills, going on park improvements.
Yeah, the first item is change order number two. Change order number one, if you recall, was just a time extension to the contract that was going to cost involved. Change order number two, which will be the final change order, because the projects are complete, is to increase the cost of $4,050, and this is for Haytown Park. And that was for additional work that was required in order to meet the ADA handicap accessibility grade requirements, required some additional work. That's been reviewed and approved by our consultant, Ann Yost. So that's the first item we have for you. In relationship to that, then, we have application for payment number two, which is in the amount We will be retaining $1,600 to allow us to inspect and ensure that the new grass is growing, that's what the $1,600 is worth. All the work is being completed.
And you advised, we got mass for part of this cost.
Yeah, we have, we had some park improvements made at Wendy Hill Park, which included a new playground, a tot and a youth playground, as well as constructing a stone wall, which actually also serves as stadium seating for the ball field. The main purpose of that was to deal with some erosion that we were experiencing at that particular field. The second project was at Winchester Park, down in Southern Farms. It's a small playground, has a new basketball court and a tot lot as well. Both of those projects cost right around $240,000. The township paid $120,000 of that, and there was a matching grant from the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources of $120,000. Then the third park was Haytown Park, and again, we added some additional play equipment, handicap accessibility of the playground, as well as down in the soccer field, and that was a $60,000 project. Again, the township matched that, $30,000, and the other $3,000, excuse me, was a grant that we received from the York County Commissioners, from the Act 13 funding, which some of you are probably familiar with and heard about the fracking, the morsetale shale. York County gets some of those funds, and in turn, they distribute some of those out to York County municipalities. So those are the three projects.
All right.
What was the issue with the ADA ramp? How were we in error, or what was missed, or?
We didn't, we did not pay upfront the consultant to go out and do an in-depth, detailed plan to shoot what the grades were and so forth. We probably would have spent that, but not more, just to then...
Get an $8,000 inspection and find out we need a $4,000 grant.
Yeah. So it was a field change, and that's not uncommon. Again, because it was a small project, you know, I don't want to make it sound like I'm attacking engineers. They're important and play an important role, but, you know, you start getting out there and then doing the surveying and plotting of all the grades and so forth, it doesn't take long to add up a pretty hefty invoice to that.
Thank you. We need to approve of, on the park improvement projects, both one and two.
And you can do that as one motion.
As I'm saying, I suggest we have a motion to approve of the change order and the application for payment.
I'll make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Off the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Got to be quick. I am D on the new business. Development right agreements, these are all pretty straightforward. The township has agreed that there's a certain amount of development rights. I was talking to the scouts earlier about each farm has so many development rights or lot rights, and like, there's three, three parcels or properties here, and together they have about, you know, seven or eight development rights. So, we're trying to preserve farmland. You can't preserve farmland to put homes on it, at least a lot of homes on it. So, so, the gentleman is trying to see how many development rights he has on land he owns, and is going to transfer them over here, I believe. So, is there a motion to approve all three of these together?
You'll make the motion.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Miller Park Master Plan, Todd?
As you can see up here, we have, Miller Park, when it was developed, there was a master plan, I think created back in 2000 or 2001. That plan has not been updated until in recent months, and, I apologize, I wasn't provided a PDF of a colored copy, but this, we had a meeting today, and we've pretty much finalized the master plan for Miller Park. This is the parking area here, which exists. We have three soccer fields, which exist as well. We have the walking path at this point, which is asphalt. We have a small pavilion, and we have the sand volleyball. Those are the components that exist today.
Is that working, Todd?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm down here on the color, I'm sorry. I can shoot up here, I just thought this one's a little easier to pick up here on the paper. The path that the chairman spoke about earlier at Miller Park is going to extend from this point and up through the woods, come around the outside perimeter, and tie into this existing asphalt path, as well as bring this piece across to tie the, that loop together. So you have one large loop around the entire park, or, you know, depending on who's, who's walking, and how much they want to walk, and then they can break it down into different areas. So that's, the path work will be wrapped up this fall. We've begun to do some construction on this extending the parking lot, which will be wrapped up in the spring. Here, we're looking at, down the road, and this may be, you know, five years, 10 years, 20 years. We received some cost estimates today, which, you know, generally, they make them a little higher, so that you feel a little better when it's coming lower. But I believe to do all the improvements, it was estimated a little over $2 million, so you could get working on the grants. But with that said, what's proposed down the road here in the future is to extend this parking area for a drop-off point. Put playground area in here. This would be a concession stand, with a little plaza area, and that's elevated, so you could look out into the fields here and down into the playground. Proposed two tennis courts, two basketball courts, and then there would be, if anyone's familiar with the rail trail, you have the little, I could call them shelters, but basically the size of a picnic table with a little roof over. There's some of those proposed, I think there's three or four up in this area around the trail. And then you see this area here, and then this blue area here, they're actually pavilions that will have picnic tables, where people will be able to reserve and rent for events and so forth. Also proposed horseshoe picks. This area, we would keep open for passive recreation, if people just want to go out, catch some sun rays, and lay on a blanket, read a book. And then what you see here, and the item that's on the agenda this evening, on this colored copy, if you see this tan color, that's proposed wildflowers, grasses, and again, that would be, you know, enhance the natural area of the park, but also help in reducing maintenance costs. And up on the wall, what you see here, I have a black and white version, and we kind of just colored it here in green, but it'll eventually be the wildflower and the grass areas. Chairman Sullivan has made a request that this be put on your agenda this evening, in hopes that we could possibly get this area sprayed while the grass is still growing, and get that started for the planting next spring.
For summer.
For summer, yeah. So, I don't know if you have anything else to add?
Well, this is a 20-foot acre park, and we got it with the help of a grant from the state of Pennsylvania, and also, we developed it with a, with a, in large part, with our grant. And the 20 acres is a quite extensive area, and we have a woodlot there of several acres, and we've taken out a lot of the invasive trees, and we're going to park some water story trees in there, and we're going to have interpretive signs as to what this tree might be, or what this brush pile is, and so forth. And it will not be paved, the trail will be a gravel mixture, firm, but not like asphalt. So it'll be just opposite, we have a trailer on the ball field, which is straight, and it's straight on all four sides, and it's asphalt. This will be opposite up here, it'll be more of a national trail, with woods and open field, and then a berry grass and so forth. So, as Todd mentioned, we have an estimate of about $600 to spray. This is a, this would never planted a grass where we're going to spray, it was always old field and various grasses, and we just mowed it, so we don't have any investment there in grass, and we're going to spray it in preparation for planting sometime next year.
And just to follow up, the, we did receive a, excuse me, proposal for Mollie Property Solutions to do the spraying of approximately two and a half to three acres for $604.36.
At this time in doing that, we just wouldn't worry about where the trails are going to go or anything, we'd just do it all and then come back whenever the trails are put in and finesse that part of it, maybe that.
We're going to mark, we're going to mark the trails. I think, we discussed this here.
We did, yeah.
We're going to mark what needs to be sprayed, and that would, as a trail goes on the meadow, and so we'll indicate where the wildflowers and prairie grass are going to be, and where the trail's going to be, and they'll stay within the flag, get these little red flags and put up.
Yeah, I was going to say, this area here already, it's an elevated area that already has some trees and shrubs and plantings on it, so we can pretty much identify that area. What our folks are going to be doing this fall, this month of November, is putting this path in here and down around here. So we'll be staking out that center line, so we'll be able to pretty much indicate what this area will be. And I just think, when we get to the point that we put this in here, you know, it's an eight-foot wide path, you know, we'll just have to work our way through the wildflowers at that point in time. And we would be able to do some of this area as well, since we'll know where this path is going to be. And likewise here, because this path will be put in as well this year. So, I would say 90% of it will be able to, we can identify.
They'll connect to the existing trail system, which is asphalt, there'll be connections, and the parking lot's connected, so. So, I wouldn't mind if you'd be involved with that, when you're going to do that. Anybody else want to have a field day?
Depends on when you do it. Sure.
Todd, you can send an email around, let us know when the staff come out there and do it. Okay, thank you. Okay, well, I'm going to take the initiative and make a motion to approve. I don't know, $604.37?
Yes.
Wow, that's another sharp pencil. All right. I'll make a motion to approve that, so that we get the spraying done this fall while the trees are still growing.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 We have a lot of potential legal scout projects, so.
Well, I'm in a lot of legal scout projects. Even, even 100 foots can also, you still have a 800 foot rank. Is that the lowest level?
Starts with scout now. Actually, when they first cross over, they have their badge or rank of scout, which is something.
Especially, we can have something for every level in the scout industry. Okay, so, thank you. Correspondents, you have that, any of your packer?
Anything of the correspondence, if anyone's interested in attending the York County Association Township's second class, you know, if you can let me know. It'll be held November 10th, out of Heritage Hills, and our registration deadline is October 21st, so if you're interested, you can let me know.
Thank you. Finally, as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, we have a closing public comment period at this time. Anybody have anything to say to the board or anybody else, just for the record? Yes? Why not? And then, please, thank you.
Hi. My name is Debbie Thompson, my husband is sitting here, Charles Thompson, we live at 12562 Pleasant Valley Road. We are the neighbors that brought the complaint against the Glenbrook Trailer Park. I thought there was going to be more discussion about that tonight, so I'm looking for clarification on where we stand with that.
You can do that.
Because we're very concerned, and we started this process of complaint last November. And I'm hearing a lot of talk tonight about all the aesthetics of the community, and how important that is, and how important it is to protect our streams. We have a stream right there that's being polluted by that park, and the aesthetics of our home are being totally destroyed.
That stream is a first-order stream, it's a, it's a, it starts out with that pond above it, and it should be almost pure water until it gets to the middle of the park. And that park has been at fault for a long time.
Yes, it has.
For different reasons.
Yes.
So, we appreciate you being vigilant, and we'll have our attorney address your, give you an update as to where we are with that. Our manager can tell you most precisely where we are. We're in litigation, we've been in litigation sometime, and they had a court order against them, didn't they? Tell us, they're being fined for what?
They actually, our zoning officer issued a violation notice, they did not comply, so he then filed a complaint, civil complaint with the district justice office. There was a hearing held, the owner did not appear, excuse me, so the judge issued a $1,000 fine plus court costs. Property still did not get cleaned up, there was no, didn't appear to be any interest in cleaning it up, so the zoning officer, again, we're required to do the notices, give them so much time and so forth, so he issued a violation notice, gave them the appropriate time to clean up, nothing happened, so he filed a second civil complaint with the district justice office. Again, the owner did not appear.
That is obvious.
Yes, so the judge, again, issued a fine, this time the maximum that can be levied at the district justice level, I believe that's correct, $12,000. So, issued a fine of $12,000 plus court costs, which leaves us now at the point, we've been there work, with fines paid, which now leaves the township at the point, where do we go from here? And I'm going to leave the legal part of it to the attorney to address.
And I'm going to speed up to that point.
We discussed this at length, we looked into the deed situation and all that, but attorney, Todd?
Well, the property ownership is currently passed into the state, if I remember correctly. I have my notes with me, so it's in an estate. The lady that owned it is deceased.
Almost two years ago.
On her estate. Her son was the executor of the estate. He hired an attorney who did some work for him, and then apparently, from that point, the estate lapsed. The attorney stopped doing the work, and then he took the opportunity to also place a judgment against the property, so I guess he did not get paid. And that happens in estates. So here we are. We have a $13,000 judgment on a property, which is in violation of our ordinances. Keep in mind that that property also has a mortgage against it, right? The claim that we have is not a priority claim, the way it is when we have sewer collections or costs like that. Those are priority claims, which lead right to the front of the line, were we to, to take court action to try and collect money under the property. These are not priority claims, they're non-priority claims, so the mortgage comes first. That gives us less leverage as a means of power, than we normally have to sort of straighten out a problem like this. Normally, you shake your fist at the landowner and say, you need to clean up, or if he won't, and you get a judgment like this, and then you levy against the property and maybe shake your fist at the mortgage holder, because they don't want to lose potential first ownership of the property. But we don't have that priority position. The question now is sort of a policy question for you fellows, you folks, to decide how much money and how deeply you want to get into the process of trying to initiate a cleanup on this property. It's going to be expensive and require legal costs for us to execute on the property with our claim, and sort of force the property to sheriff's sake, right? At which point, perhaps the landowner finally comes forward and says, I'm going to take the steps I need to clean up the property. I'll add that your position here is complicated by the fact that this is not the run-of-the-mill property, for example, a house that's adjacent to yours, it's a property that has trailers on it, there must be some sort of septic system there, I have no idea what the system is, if it's compliant, that sort of...
They've had problems with septic system over the years, too.
So there are issues there that also impede whether or not you want to get involved and try and exert your claim and get ownership of the property, because you may be finding some liability by doing so. So it's a complicated issue, there's no attorney on the other side that we can deal with. The question, as I said, becomes a policy issue of what kind of steps and how much of the township's money you want to exert to try and force some kind of cleanup.
This is a third-world country we live next to, and since the mother died a few years ago, the son, I don't even say runs, it's just a lot less. They took a car and put it next to that stream, and took the back out and smashed it, all the glass, all the oils, and I guess it's laying back in the weeds. They burned toxin stuff, tires, plastic. I've had run-ins a dozen times with these people. I mean, it is a third-world country. All I want to do is, my property's worthless, I couldn't sell it to them wholesale, especially since the mother passed.
You live next door?
Yes, yes, and what I'm puzzled about is, this isn't just a prior residence, this is a business that you, that you, as the township, you have rights, the way I read it, when I read the rules and regulations of what a mobile home park should follow, they're breaking these rules, and according to what I'm reading, what you folks have written in your township regulations, you have the right to stop them. That's why I'm puzzled. This is a business, they should be able to understand.
I think this problem's run on long enough.
And I, I'm just...
We gave it every chance to make corrections. Let's take as soon as possible action, I mean. Well, if you recall, I mentioned earlier in my report, there were, there was some direction that was given at the last executive session, and I'm still waiting to try to get in contact with the correct people, and that's why I mentioned that I'm going to probably request an executive session prior to our next board meeting, to share with the board what response to be received from those other parties that are involved in that property. The other thing is, just to mention, you mentioned, I think you're probably referring to the zoning ordinance, when you talk about the mobile home park.
Yes, there's a whole thing about mobile home parks.
Do you know how long that mobile home park has been there?
I have no idea.
Yeah, I think it was all...
They were when I lived there.
I think it was long before...
I think it was the 70s.
Long before our zoning ordinance, so their grandfather...
So there's no, they don't have to do a licensing every year, and they don't pay taxes to somebody that...
They pay taxes. They pay real estate taxes, but, yeah.
They haul in junk cars on the road with bases and setting up next to the house. Beyond that house is probably an over 25 wrecked trail.
That you see as walking on the trail.
Right now the leaves are hiding everything.
They have been violated with multiple regulations, health and otherwise.
Yeah, I think as we talked about, there's other parties that may have an interest in that property, unfortunately, I think they're the only folks that may get this movie, because it's very obvious after two fines to $13,000, the fines alone are not going to...
I agree that the other is not going anywhere.
Yeah, that's fair.
So you're referring to the mortgage company, because they have a financial interest, and the insurance company, who certainly should have a financial interest if there is an insurance company, let's put it, because there is liability all over the place there. There's children running around in garbage and abandoned vehicles, abandoned trailers that animals are coming in and out of.
This is, I don't speak, I think this is the highest priority, someone's going to get hurt.
We understand that, and, you know, I think Keith's actions to take them to court and so forth demonstrate that he recognized.
Yes, that's clear.
Unfortunately, as I explained to Mrs. Thompson when I spoke with Keith about the home, I know it's frustrating, but fortunately you're required to give him the maximum amount of time to respond, and, you know, it just...
And I understand and respect time frames, I do. What I'm concerned about is that I'm starting to hear that financially we may not do anything. Financially it may be more than we, more of a burden than the township wants to take on, so that leaves us in a horrible limbo. We've actually even offered in the past to help this kid to get things, my husband's a mechanic, and he's talked to him about fixing cars, he's talked to him about how you can make money selling your car to...
What's this about?
A scrap plate.
The kids are... Not out of control.
He's not prepared.
The solicitor can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what he's referring to about liability boils down to financial liability, and then if we were to come to own that property and there's septic issues and pollution issues, if we own the property, we have a responsibility. And what I'll compare it to is the Sightsland property that we're dealing with right now. If you recall, we have that lien, just to give you the example, we have a lien of over $18,000, the property is not worth $18,000. And in order for us to go in and execute the lien, assume ownership of the property, you know, it costs us $4,000, $5,000, so we're already losing money off the sewer lien. Do we want to...
I tell you...
But, that's the thing...
I agree, it's expensive money to make it right, we spend money to make the parks look pretty.
Thank you.
We should make your neighborhood look pretty.
Yeah, because I'm a resident, too.
To the best of our ability, yeah. Well, our discussions have been to talk to the insurance company and the lien holder, and so we need to get through that course, because they have the most vested interest in it.
It's not fair to the people.
It's in progress now.
And I'm concerned with that stream, I mean, I, you know, for the reasons we moved here from Baltimore was to get up into a nice environment in the country, and I know that to protect the stream...
That's the first thing to do.
And...
We've been here 25 years now.
Stuff washes down that stream, whenever there's a really bad, like the spring that rains and whatnot.
Well, I think the board, the person, is very anxious to get this done and take care of. We don't want to bank off the township, but we may expense some money, as Bill said, let's do it, that's been this long. I wouldn't like, I wouldn't want to be in your shoes, I wouldn't want to live next to that every day, every night, whatever, I just wouldn't want to be in your position. So, there's some sense of urgency here.
Understood.
Okay, so, hopefully my next comment, it seems like it will turn off.
Well, how long have you folks lived there?
22 years.
Wow, time flies.
And, you know, years ago it was not a issue.
No.
It really wasn't.
It was still a nightmare, it still had problems.
It was, it was, but nothing like this in more recent years, the last, maybe 10 years, because her health went downhill and then she passed, and...
Well, I think the board, if you allow you to talk to our manager, get updates periodically.
Yeah, we've been communicating.
Yeah, yeah. Todd has actually come up to him.
And talk if you must, if any, if it happens, we should know, but know before must. So hopefully we get this thing cured sooner rather than later. Thanks for your interest.
Okay, thank you very much.
This doesn't have anything to do with you, but like I said, it's a wild, wild west. At nighttime, they might shoot a couple hundred shells off, okay? Who shoots guns at night?
I think we all empathize with you, we really do.
Yeah, I said, the occupants aren't aware of the damage. Okay, thank you.
Is there anything we can do under the burn ban ordinance, if they're burning tires and all that kind of business?
Well, it's not the burn ban, it's just under...
I understand the burning...
Burn ordinance, yeah.
Is there something that can be enforced there?
Yeah, we're, two things can happen, if they're doing it certainly while we're here during working hours, they can contact us, or if you can document it through video recordings or photographs or what have you, and document the date and time, and, you know, how long it burned, and if you know exactly what they're burning.
Right after 10:00 PM is a problem.
Right.
If that's against the law, then it's there, so if it goes, you know...
Yeah, if it's after 10:00 PM, you can call 911 and have the fire department come out and extinguish the fire.
Storage and burning of tires is a D P violation.
Wait, I asked you to send a copy of the letter that I sent here to the environmental website, I never heard that.
He responded, he was called, he said he was going to, you guys already had it in your hands, and he didn't send it.
But our burning ordinance prohibits burning of plastics and metals and chemicals...
That's just common sense, there isn't a common sense there.
Thanks for your interest, and hopefully we'll get some results, that I know I need to must feel. And has something to say?
One side of the park was to back, kind of, to the maintenance report, where are we with the installing of the fire emergency? I don't see any...
No, it's, we, the guys are paving and doing all their summer work, so if it's colder and before the snow flies, they will be up, but it's just, the paving will soon usually by November first, the blacktop plants start shutting down, so we have to focus our time on that.
Quickly, we have this letter here from some fairly unhappy individual about the septic system.
Yes.
On our property, on, let's put it right, is that on...
On air.
On air. In a sense or two, lawyers, so somebody is very concerned about being treated unfairly regarding our septic system.
And this is a result, and I think it started actually before that, to read the letter, she talks about when the septic plan was approved back in the early 2000s, 2000 and a year forward, somewhere. The, I guess it was, I don't remember, two, three years ago, the property owner did not have their septic pump as required by our program, we sent notice upon notice, and we ended up taking it before the district justice, which is actually a criminal complaint. And she failed to appear, she did not pay the fines, and there's actually a warrant today that's still out. So, that letter was simply providing us with a copy of the documentation that she had a pump this time and was venting.
But by now, she's in compliance?
She is in compliance, but my understanding is the property just sold last week at tax offset sale.
Well, anything else the board wants to bring up? I'd like to thank the scouts for coming and staying awake. I know it's your bedtime, so these young boys will let you go, thanks for coming.
Thank you for having us.
What are you talking about? They're older than you.
I do, I do.
We'll make a motion to return.
I'll second it. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.